I want to welcome you to the meeting of our four boards discuss the school master plan extension based on the 2011 master plan study and here we are discussing an extension that will be gone through by the school committee. The four boards present tonight are the finance committee. We have the school committee, which they're meeting, the finance committee, as I said, PPBC, and our board, the select board. We're going to be walk through a presentation and there'll be question and answer afterwards. So with that, I will turn it over to the chair of the school committee, Dr. Bar. The floor is yours and thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Brawley. I have to say this is the biggest meeting I've more or less been chair of, so it'd be a new experience. Just want to welcome everyone and really appreciate that you're here tonight. Your time and willingness to meet in this group is much appreciated to discuss the complexity of the issues before us as we continue to review the school master plan to Reno or replace Mitchell and Pollard. You, we are the elected and appointed bodies in our town who have the most expertise and experience, hopefully honed over years of capital and municipal and schools planning. As we all know, goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, as school facilities are central and crucial to the town of Needham and its residents. The planning, construction, and financing of Mitchell and Pollard are complex, which I might say is quite the understatement, and require the collaboration of our four boards and committees. We've worked together before on multiple projects previously and successfully, but this is the largest and most complicated in my memory as a resident, parent, and now school committee member. To have us all in one room, to hear you share your opinions, expertise, and experience is an invaluable experience and very necessary as we move forward with the best plan possible. We, the school committee, as we weigh a variety of options, are greatly interested in hearing what all of you and your boards and committees think about the options. We have a variety of and numerous factors to consider and voices, opinions of the PPBC, the finance committee, and the select board as planning leaders in Needham are crucial to our decision making. At this point, I thought about making a joke about saving taxpayer dollars by not hiring an outside facilitator. Not a difficult decision as we have the best facilitator I know for this in our own school system. I would like to turn that job over to Dr. Goodkins to lead tonight in managing the conversation.
Thanks, Dr. Bar. Thank you, board members. I'd like to, this evening, if it's okay, Mr. Brawley, you've turned it over to Dr. Bar and Dr. Bar to me, so I guess it's okay. I'm going to try to manage this meeting and get through a presentation so that everyone on the board, on the four boards, is on the same page regarding the status of the facility master plan extension study, and then manage some questions and answers from board members. When, after I've done that, and I'll watch time and I'll move us along so that we can get out of here in a reasonable hour, within an hour, that's the goal, within an hour. I'll turn this over to Dr. Bar to kind of conclude the meeting and gavel this out of session. First of all, I want to acknowledge that three of our principals, Jessica Downey, the principal of High Rock, Greg Bayes, principal of Mitchell, and Tamith Abibbo, principal of Pollard, are here to listen in on the conversation. They've been deeply involved in this process for a couple of years, and I appreciate them being here. You have in front of you a couple of documents. You have a hard copy of the presentation that our design team will go through in a moment. And you also have the document that outlines the general goals of master planning process and also some considerations for why the school committee is thinking about a six-eight middle school campus. So you have that for you. What I'd like to do is really turn this over to the design team with thanks, have them introduce each other, although I think, Michelle, that I'll tackle those general goals first and then turn over the presentation, but why don't you go ahead and say hello and get the presentation up?
Good evening, everyone. You hear me okay? I'm Don Walter, principal with Doran Woodyer Architects. And with me here this evening are Michelle Rogers, who's project manager on this particular project, and Jason Boone, our educational facilities planner, who are both also senior associates within the firm. So it's just a pleasure to have an opportunity to present and discuss this project with you tonight.
Let me begin by just sharing the general master planning process from the school committee's perspective. I won't go through each one, but I do want to highlight, as Connie mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that the main goal was to address physical and programmatic needs at Pollard and the Mitchell schools. I will tell you personally that those needs have been highlighted this winter with the failure of individual heating systems in rooms, both at Pollard and Mitchell, causing floods. Actually, Mitchell, today, we're waiting parts where we have a couple of classes that lack heat and will for the next week because the parts need to be either manufactured or they're on a long order. So those needs are real and immediate at both schools. Also, a sense of overcrowding at the schools and a lack of appropriate space at High Rock. We're looking, the school committee is looking to avoid expensive building maintenance projects over time to extend the life of these buildings. They do want to avoid wasting funds on temporary modulars for Mitchell project if that's possible. They also like to complete these building projects within a reasonable period of time. And also, they're considering strongly the idea of a middle school campus, grade six through eight, on Harris Avenue where Pollard presently is, allowing High Rock to provide needed elementary space and also thinking to the future about universal preschool, which I think we all understand is certainly on the horizon. So with that, as the general goals for the school committee, I'm going to turn this over to the design team to take us through where we are at presently with options.
So me?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, everyone, for coming here again tonight. So what's interesting, we've actually been in Needham for a little bit of time now. And this is actually 10 years worth of study that we've done. We started back in 2011 looking at Hillside and Mitchell. So tonight, what we want to do is give a little background on the work that we've done to date. Talk about the work that we've done, the most recent study that we're here to talk about, this really took place over 2020. And then talk about some of the assumptions that were made and the potential solutions that we've arrived at. Also, we did on February 8th have a staff, Mitchell staff meeting and families meetings, two separate meetings to present this information. And we put out questionnaires to everyone. And we wanted to have an opportunity tonight to talk about some of the results that we learned and then open up for questions at the end. So, as I said, 2011, we did a master plan study. It was Mitchell, Hillside, and Pollard. And what we learned through that study, we did physical conditions analysis, we did educational programming, we did space needs analysis, we looked at capacities in all those buildings. And while all of them, Mitchell, Hillside, and Pollard, had issues back then, Hillside certainly had the greatest needs overall. So based upon that, the town engaged with the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, and what came of that work, as you know, is the new Sanita Williams School on Central Ave. So that was completed in 2019 and brought us back to 2020. While we still have issues at Mitchell and Pollard. So we took a step back and actually looked at all of the elementary and middle grade schools. And in doing that, you can see we looked at the facility conditions again, analyzing enrollment projections. We conducted capacity analysis again and then developed potential solutions and estimated costs. And when we developed those costs, as you can imagine, when you're looking at two schools, they're quite large. And the other component that became, other component that became important part of this is that there's also an overcrowding issue at High Rock. So that was discovered by going through all of this analysis. So we presented that information, kind of took a step back, and the town said, well, I think we need to look at how we're going to finance this. This is not just a, hey, let's go and spend hundreds of millions of dollars and take care of these schools, but how can we spread the work that needs to take place in these buildings over a period of time? Which is essentially what we're doing now as an update to that 2020 study. So we've created multiple scenarios that we'll share with you tonight and actually looked at different capacities at Mitchell, whether it's three-section, four-section, or five-section school scenarios. And have even looked at potentially putting additional classrooms on the Elliott School. So there's a lot of moving parts to this right now. And of course, we're here tonight to discuss that and ultimately get to a preferred direction for the community. So with that being said, yes, sir?
Can I, just one thing, if I may, Mr. Lee, I neglected to say, I would prefer if we could go through the entire presentation and then go to questions, if folks could write questions down because I think otherwise it would be difficult to get through. So if that's okay.
One particular number is 126. It's kind of key throughout the whole thing. So maybe answering that question, make sure that ends on the same page. In the discussions of the master plan extension, the numbers, I think the numbers have fluctuated a bit. At one point, I think it was 114 classrooms. So I'm just curious what the input data was. We're talking about enrollment numbers and enrollment projections and how that number is changing, ultimately understanding the confidence of this 126 number.
I think we're going to be discussing that as we get to the capacity analysis.
And if folks would, and I apologize, and thank you, Josh, for clarifying that. Just if you write down a question so we can get through the slide, I would rather that we have a good conversation once we get through everything, if that's possible.
Appreciate the question, though. So we're going to first start with where we started back in 2020 and the facility conditions that we studied during that first initial master plan. So Doran Woodyer came to Needham with our team of consultants. And through this study, and I apologize because I don't think you can all see this, but we looked at several conditions across the board. So we started with site and civil analysis. If you read these columns going down, the schools are going across. We looked at accessibility, exterior building envelope, that would be your roof, windows, doors, interior components, architectural components, overall accessibility, how does it match up to ADA compliance? Then we looked at structural components of each building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing components, fire protection. And then finally, this category, which is called functional use of space. This category is also extremely important because it talks about how we're actually using the spaces within each facility. So that is, are your classrooms the right size for the number of students who are in those classrooms? Are they actually classrooms or were they, you know, former closets in some cases? Were they, you know, spaces that were designed for something other than 24 students within that space or for special needs? In some cases, we saw special needs being delivered in vestibules and things of that sort. So that's the categories going down and then going across, you can see each school. So it starts Pollard, High Rock, Rodmeadow, Elliott, Mitchell, Newman, and then Sanita Williams, which is the newest school online. And these were, we took all those reports and then we kind of gave them an overall grade in five categories. And the darker green color means that it's doing very well. As you get lighter green, it goes to very good to good, yellow is fair, in need of repair or replacement, and red is poor. So immediately, you can see that the Mitchell School is the school that across the board has the most red dots. So we know that that facility itself has the greatest needs. We also see that the second category, the second school with the greatest facility needs would be the Pollard School. But this, again, going back to the fact that that category for functional use of space is so important. It is important to understand that even though the High Rock facility is a great facility, it also has needs. So again, Mitchell with the greatest physical needs, Pollard with the second greatest, and then this one red dot on the High Rock. It has significant overcrowding for the grade level and the number of students that it's serving. So when we came back in 2022 to look at the actual buildings, we did a classroom count across the district. How many elementary school classrooms do you have? And how many do you need based on the enrollment projections that we've received for this particular study? You have 120 elementary school classrooms, and that does not include those six classrooms at the Mitchell School. So those six modular classrooms meet your minimum needs for capacity across your elementary school. But what you need ideally is 132 because you have inequities across your elementary schools. You have some schools that have extended learning spaces, classrooms dedicated to foreign language, classrooms dedicated to technology or users. And in other schools, they have to use those classrooms for general classrooms because they just don't have enough space. We did the same analysis for your middle school. And what we found is that you have 86 classrooms in your middle school. But to meet your enrollment, you need 101. And the greatest need for those classrooms exists at the High Rock School. That is where your need for general classrooms, the greatest lack for those classrooms. There's also parities that are not occurring in your middle school programs. So High Rock has a lack of special education spaces. It has the inability to offer any additional programs for that middle school grade area. When we came here in 2021 with our initial study, we put together many, many different potential solutions to solve these three problems. We studied a status quo option, which actually means just keeping all your grade levels on the particular site that they're on and keeping grade levels the same across the district, meaning that you're running a K through five, a separate six, and then a seven, eight school. And then we looked at different grade configurations. And you can see up there, we explored many of them. We looked at K through, K through five and six, eight being combined. We looked at bringing the an entire super school, which was a pre-K, K through five and a six through eight. We looked at two middle schools. We looked at exploring moving fifth grade into the middle school level. We covered a lot of ground in that 2020 report. And what came out was that there were two options that really wanted to further exploration. That is the status quo. Grade configurations being the same as they are. And the second was looking at bringing a sixth elementary school onboard, which would be the High Rock School, and moving the sixth grade to the seven, eight campus. So with that, what we did was we studied timelines. How could you actually accomplish those different options and scenarios? And what we did was we plugged those options into timelines based on the MSBA timeline. So if you started with a statement of interest, which is called appears an SOI, and you went to the MSBA and asked them to participate in any of these school building projects, it would take you on average about seven and a half years from the day that you submitted to the day you get to move in. Now, we know that Sanita Williams did it in about six and a half years. But most, in general, it takes about seven and a half years. So these timelines were plugged into each of those scenarios. And it gave us the ability, once we plugged in cost, to figure out how much it was going to cost you with escalation across the board. In 2020, we had four options that we explored. And essentially, it's, does the Mitchell School go first or does the Pollard School go first? So in option A, we looked at the Mitchell School going first, being the first MSBA project. And what that requires is building temporary structures for the Mitchell School students because you cannot have construction going on on that site. This option B was to put the Pollard School first and then move, then go forward into doing the Mitchell School last. Option C was an accelerated program. And then option D actually said, let's get it done in the shortest amount of time and let's do the Mitchell and Pollard School at the same time. When we came back in 2022, one of the main reasons for doing the 2022 study was to see what those timelines would look like financially if you spread them out so that you wouldn't have concurrent projects. And in addition to that, we added a fourth option, which is option E. So the top one, which is similar to the first option A, where the Mitchell School goes first, what's in gray there is the temporary school. Yellow would be the Pollard, and then finally, you would have an addition on the High Rock School so that you could solve the overcrowding on the High Rock School. In option E, the idea was to build a smaller Mitchell School and then put an addition on the Elliott School, which is shown in blue. So it would be the same timeline as A for the first part, but then you would come and add an addition onto the Elliott School at the very end to get to those 126 classrooms. So that doesn't give you the 132, that only gives 126. And then in option C, we looked at Pollard being an MSBA project and then Mitchell being a three-section elementary school because you brought on a sixth elementary school at the High Rock. And option D is very similar, except that the Pollard is not an MSBA project and therefore you can accelerate the construction of that project by not going through all the steps that the MSBA requires you to do and therefore bring the Mitchell School online quicker. So this is what that looks like if you were to look at in the year. So if you can see that, as I had mentioned, it takes about seven and a half years to do the first project. So up there in A, you can see, where's my clicker here, the top line, five-section school for Mitchell. You're done almost in the first, you're done in eight years. There'd be a small gap and then you would go and do the Pollard School. And then finally, the peach gap there is the High Rock School. And that would be at the very end where you would have to go and add classrooms onto that school, taking about 24 years to complete that scenario. In option E, again, same scenario as the previous one, except you're only building a four-section school for Mitchell. So you're smaller, so you still need those additional classrooms at some point in time. And you don't get them until you're done with the Elliott School, 31 years from the day that you start. Options C and D are very similar to each other, where option C again is an MSBA project. So it takes about that seven and a half years to complete. But the day that you move students into that school is the day that you get to move students out of the Mitchell School. So Mitchell could be unoccupied within seven years, seven and a half years. If that makes sense. So you've done the Pollard School, now you can actually move the kids out of the Mitchell School. And then you can go and do the Mitchell School project after that, and it would be a smaller three-section school. And again, D is very similar, except the timeline for the Pollard School being a non-MSBA project would be shorter. You'd get the kids out of the Mitchell School in about a year or so less. So the difference is about a year between that time that they get to vacate the Mitchell School. And then you would go and build that Mitchell School, and you have some flexibility in when that Mitchell School would happen. You could start the MSBA process for that at any point that you've decided that this is the goal after you've started construction for the Pollard School. And then you would be able to complete that project in as close as two years after you've moved into, after you've moved the kids off that site. Or you could extend it out to solve those financial issues and extend that timeline four years out after that, if you wish. Those are how we got to the timelines. And Jason's going to talk a little bit about the capacity analysis that we did to get to understand why we think that we need the number of classrooms we have.
Thank you, Michelle. We've organized these capacity graphics by the four scenarios that Michelle just presented. And before we get into the data, let me just characterize how to read these graphics. The purple line that you see in each one of these capacity charts represents the most recent draft McKibben enrollment projection that was available to us in November of last year. It's not formally official yet, but we were using the latest and greatest data that was available to us to produce these capacity analyses. And that's represented by the purple line in each one of these graphics. The school committee has established guidelines for class size, and they vary by individual grade. So we've calculated into these analyses each one of those variations for the various grades. And that's what's generating the yellow areas behind each one of the purple lines. The bottom black line represents the low end of the district's class size guideline. The top line represents the high end of the district's class size guidelines. So you can imagine that capacity is dependent on how many students we're actually putting in each one of these classrooms. And so ideally, over the course of the next several years, we want the enrollment to be as close to the midpoint or below in each one of these yellow areas as possible to give the district the most flexibility in absorbing enrollment fluctuations. So in this particular set of graphics, we have what a Mitchell five-section school would look like at the elementary level. The little house here represents when a Mitchell project would be completed. So as Michelle mentioned, we're operating currently at 120 classrooms across the elementary district. We complete a five-section Mitchell, and that ups the total number of classrooms available across the district to 126. And therefore, the capacity jumps up, and that's the step that you see in the yellow area. So at the conclusion of the enrollment forecast that we know, that would put the enrollment roughly in the middle of that bandwidth. When we look at Pollard, the enrollment is a little more volatile based on the scale that starts to regularize out toward the end of the forecast. And you can see that it's currently hovering sort of in the upper, in the upper third of that capacity bandwidth. Again, the house represents adding classrooms. In this case, essentially replacing the modular classrooms that are there currently with permanent construction, how that would affect the capacity of Pollard. And again, our enrollment forecast didn't go out far enough to speculate what it would look like when this project actually gets completed. But if we were to extrapolate out that we would have the enrollment be near the bottom of that capacity with, again, offering us the greatest flexibility. And then in this scenario, High Rock would not get completed until well off to the right of these graphics, the year 2046. And so what's being represented here is for the next 15 years, we would expect that the capacity at High Rock to be well over the capacity based on the number of students that we foresee in that time horizon. So that's option A, where we're resolving issues in the places where they currently exist. Again, in option E, it's almost identical, except that the Mitchell Project is smaller. And once the Mitchell Project opens, we're actually not adding any capacity to the elementary district until that Elliott Project is realized well out at the end of this particular timeline. So as you can see, the enrollment forecast again hovers up near the top end of this capacity graphic, which would translate into higher class sizes in general across the entire elementary district with only 120 elementary classrooms available until that Elliott Project could get completed. The other two graphics that we see here are the same because the projects are the same for options A and E. As we switch over to option C, and we look at the sixth grade migrating over to be part of a middle school experience all on the same campus. This is the portion of the Pollard graph that you saw before. And then, once the project occurs at Pollard, that the capacity, again, would put the enrollment forecast near the bottom of that capacity bandwidth. The bottom graphic represents what happens when you execute Pollard first and then utilize High Rock as an elementary school for a little while as the fifth elementary school. And then once a new Mitchell comes online, there would be six elementary schools in the district. in the district. And so what's happening is this house represents when the Pollard Project would come online and students would move over to High Rock. Because there are fewer classrooms at High Rock than there are currently at Mitchell, the capacity in the district actually dips a little bit between the two projects. To characterize how much this gray uh enrollment forecast is over uh the capacity, it would be less than one student per classroom in terms of class size across the elementary district. But then once the new three-section Mitchell opens, uh you can see that the enrollment now again is near the bottom of that capacity bandwidth, meaning as Dr. Gudicant mentioned earlier, there would be opportunity to offer greater programmatic parity across the elementary district for things like Spanish or technology or potentially even universal pre-K should that come along. And then similarly in option D, um these are very similar again. Remember that the difference between them is the gap uh between the end of the Pollard Project and the end of the new Mitchell Project. Uh, there's a few extra years in this window. So so we've so we've tried to summarize all the complexity that Dr. Barr mentioned at the outset uh of this meeting in this one sort of flow chart. Once we sort of got our hands wrapped around all of the various issues at play, what we came to realize, or what we think we came to realize, is that one of the key questions to ask first is where's the most educationally appropriate place for sixth grade? Since the sixth graders went over to High Rock, the district has been operating a middle school, a single middle school program, it just happens to be located in two buildings on two different campuses. Based on what we've heard as part of the study, there may be an educational logic and benefit to reuniting those populations all under one roof on the same campus. And that particular decision has an impact on what can happen elsewhere in the district. If, for example, the decision was, well, maybe there's not really so much value in that, we don't need to put them on the same campus, then there becomes these two choices about Mitchell as the first uh priority project to move forward. And the second question would be, how big is appropriate for Mitchell? Um, we have some images that we can share if there are questions about all of these test fits related to these various scenarios, but we explored both a five-section uh Mitchell School on the Mitchell site, a four-section Mitchell, and ultimately a three-section Mitchell to see which ones would fit best. If the five-section school were to move forward, it would be necessary to execute some temporary modular elementary school likely on the Defazio property first so that we can vacate the property in order to do the construction um at Mitchell. Once that's completed, right, the Pollard Project would follow in sequence, and then the High Rock um thereafter. And you can see that that path, based on our escalations and cost estimates, is around three hundred and ninety-one million, and it would generate an additional a hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet um in the district. If, in fact, um that's deemed to be too large, then we might execute a four-section project uh on the Mitchell property, would still require temporary modular facility as swing space. The the Pollard and the High Rock Projects would be the same, but because the Elliott, I'm excuse me, because the Mitchell Project was smaller, in order to reach our target of a hundred and twenty-six sort of minimum classrooms across the district, six classrooms would be needed at Elliott to create the balance of of capacity. And so that um that total was slightly more expensive, around three hundred and ninety-two million, but would interestingly only generate a hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet of extra um building footprint. When we go down the the third um decision tree on the right, if, in fact, um sixth grade moves over to the to the Pollard Property, the next key question is which project is most likely to be supported by the MSBA? And if it were uh the Pollard Project, um it would still go first, but MSBA would be supporting that. We wouldn't need to do um a whole lot at High Rock to convert it to an elementary school, and then the Mitchell Project uh would follow. The total uh project cost there um was estimated to be roughly three hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, generate more overall square footage in the district, and as Michelle has already identified, take less time. So that's the decision tree um trying to simplify what all of the issues here um in this master plan. Don mentioned that um as a part of our engaging with the Mitchell faculty and parents, we did um, we did produce a survey. We're not going to take the time to go through them in detail. What I might do is just put up um one particular kind of response to um tell you how to read uh the output from that survey, but if there are questions about that, we can cover that in the Q and A period. Most of the respondents were uh parents, we had around ninety respondents. And some of, most of the questions were structured in this way, where um a a topic was posed, and then respondents were asked to characterize it on a s- a sliding scale. And so what you're seeing here, the numeric response represents the average uh on that sliding scale of all the respondents, but the color that you see behind it could be characterized as the level of agreement. So if there's a lot of density in the color that's behind in one particular area, that indicates a lot of agreement. So in this case, there was a lot of agreement on the more important end for the first response, a lot of agreement in the middle, but the um the responses for this last um option were more spread out, so there was less agreement among the respondents uh related to that three-point-four score. So again, we won't go over those in a lot of detail, there are only eight questions that we asked this group, and it concluded with an open-ended question about what questions do you have? And so we've included those in your packet, there are some uh some very interesting questions uh that came out that we think might have a lot of value, um but perhaps the superintendent will cover those in more detail in a little bit.
All right, thank you. That's a lot of information, you know, kind of drinking from a fire hose kind of kind of thing. Uh, thank you, Don and Michelle and Jason. Uh, we can go back to any of uh those slides uh if that will be helpful. I will encourage you to look at the results. Uh, you know, that that was really an in, in many ways, an informal poll. Uh, it was not a uh huge number of responses, it was less than the folks who attended the meeting, but at least it gives you a sense of what people were thinking after they heard this actually very same presentation. I think what what I would like to try to do with your permission, um board members, is just to facilitate some general questions and comments. And I I'm hoping to the members of the school committee, this is an opportunity for you to hear um ideas, questions, concerns from other board members, uh because I know that uh as Dr. Barr will mention a little bit, you have some meetings upcoming that you've got to make some decisions. Um, so why don't we just uh start there? I'll try to facilitate um with your hand raised, uh and we'll go from there. So Mr. Lanetta, go right ahead.
Thanks, Doctor. Two, two questions. Um, in terms of the survey, um there were ninety participants or respondents out of a potential, how many? How many received your survey?
We, I, I'm trying to think, we had, um, I want to say in total with our staff, with the staff from our middle schools and and Mitchell and families, I want to say in total, there were probably two hundred, two hundred participants altogether, and all folks received the survey at the end of the presentation, um so.
Gotcha. One more, one more question from a um pedagogical point of view. A couple of years back, if I remember correctly, the reason for taking sixth grade and segregating them into High Rock was that it was more important when they transitioned from fifth grade to have a an easier environment than to be put in an environment with eighth grade. So uh, can you explain how how the rationale of all that maybe has changed or pedagogically makes a difference, or kind of to share that?
Yeah, it's, it is a great question, and um I I'll try to respond briefly and and also point out that within uh this one document, there's some considerations about what may make sense moving forward. I think the 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 real event, I think, the first event was that there was a need for space at Pollard for grades six through eight. And um, and I recall all of this, it was my first year in the district uh where we had to quickly make a decision about what makes the most sense. High Rock had ju, the library had just left High Rock where it had been temporarily. Um, and uh, I think because of the space crunch at Pollard, the the availability of this building, um and with a long-term view to making, maintaining High Rock as an elementary school, uh the idea was, let's create a special place, as you point out, a bridge, if you will, to the middle school years at High Rock for our sixth graders, and let's make it an interesting, innovative program for our sixth graders on a temporary basis until we can resolve the middle school question and size. And of course, along the way, as we all know, Newman got in the way, um but had to be completely re rehabilitated, and then Hillside, and 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 we know, we know that history. And High Rock continues to be a successful sixth-grade center for our students um due to the efforts of the staff and our principal, Jessica Downey. At the same time, it's, it's become clear that the space at High Rock is, although great, and it's wonderful space for kids, uh it no longer has the program space for sixth graders. Um, it's actually lacked that space for a while, but we make do. For example, in special education programming, which we pride ourselves in, we actually send some six, we have some sixth graders skip High Rock and go from fifth grade to Pollard because we just lack the space at High Rock to to meet their needs. And so as this facility's master plan unfolded, one of the conversations we've been having with our principals and staff and the school committee is, well, maybe now it really is time to look at what we had intended to do all along, and that is to bring the sixth grade back to a a campus. Um, and some of the reasons are articulated, being more developmentally appropriate, an efficient use of space, an efficient use of staff, because we have to duplicate space and staff, whereas on one campus, we would not have to. And in addition, we thought, and we do still think, that perhaps there's a way to create a school within a school at Pollard, uh where perhaps the sixth grade still can enjoy a unique experience, um but take advantage of the programs and spaces in one school, the cafeteria, the auditorium, the gym, the library, um and still though enjoy a unique uh sixth-grade experience and still make it a bridge into the middle school and and actually to the secondary level. Um, your question is an important one, it has been part of the thinking and and planning. And and at this point, as I think about where the schools are, what what makes the most sense developmentally for our kids, efficient use of space and programming, I'm encouraged by this idea of a six-to-eight campus, uh if we can make that happen um on Harris Avenue. Mary Ann.
Dan, I'm hoping I don't muddy the water, but I I guess I would also, since I was the chair back at the time that that decision was made of the school committee. What I would observe, and you've said without sort of saying, was we had a variety of options that were all up on that chart, you know, the two five-by-eight schools, a sixth-grade center, all those different things. They were all expensive. We were in the same boat that we're in today, trying to figure out how to make it work. And what ultimately happened was that our superintendent and our staff assured us that whatever model the town could figure out that we wanted to go with, they would make it work, and they set about ultimately making a phenomenal sixth-grade program work. But what got us to the sixth-grade program was a lot of working with the community, and the value that we took from the community ultimately was that by the time their children were in sixth grade, they wanted them to start to have the same experience. It was really kind of fascinating to me, and I still talk about that as an epiphany of public conversation. The notion that we would have two middle schools really riled everybody up, okay? But they want, it was really important to them, and they articulated to have all their sixth graders, once they left elementary school as they currently had it, to have a similar experience. And that ultimately got us to saying, okay, we're still going to have this six, seven, eight, what's the configuration going to be, and got us to High Rock. So it was um, it was an interesting public process. And that happened to be the least expensive option, too.
Thanks, Mary Ann, for that uh, the additional background there. You know, I was also thinking about High Rock. When we envisioned High Rock at first years, we were actually in the planning process, we had planned on modular classrooms to provide the space it really needed because we knew the enrollment, not only was the enrollment going to grow, and you could see where there was some spikes there, but we also knew the program space was was not exactly adequate. So there were absolutely trade-offs in creating the sixth-grade center. Ultimately, it was deemed too expensive, the modular classrooms, and they would have to go on the soccer fields. So that would just essentially eat up any available space at that, at that school. So we said, you know what, we're, we're going to make do, and we have um until you you have to figure out what's the the ne, the the next step. All of your thoughts, questions? Matt?
Thank you, Dan. Um, you know, they say what's old is new, and I'm dating myself, but I did go to a Pollard with a sixth, seventh, and eighth, and uh I don't know who else on this board did as well. I think looking at the decision tree, I think that's one of the best slides, because you look at that, you look at the dollars, and I think there's consensus from what I've heard, you know, talking in the community about trying to get Pollard, you know, reunited to six, seven, eight, and you go through that tree, and then it really comes down to the MSBA and financing, which it always does. I know with the Muzzy Project, we've talked about using creative financing in that project, and other developers try to help pay for these uh projects, which is, you know, as we can see, very expensive. To me, MSBA has to be for one of them. I know, I see the option that, you know, going without MSBA, and I know that's not guaranteed, but to me, that's really where we have to be. I I guess my question is, otherwise would be presented, you really can't have them for both, I'm assuming otherwise would be shown um that we could do it for both. So the question again is, which one would we want to go with first? And it looks like Pollard uh would be the reasonable option for that. I just had a, two questions, I guess, as far as the future school needs numbers, uh which Mary Ann sits on, I sit on, um and I know they've shown level, if not somewhat of a decrease. Are these um class sizes based on those numbers? I'm just trying to understand what numbers we're using for class size. Ultimately, it's up to the school committee how you want to uh do with it programmatically. And then second, what would the MSBA right now um be contributing as far as a percentage? I don't know what it is at now, just to give us an idea of what that would save the town. Thank you.
Class size at the, at the um general guidelines for class size at the elementary level, kindergarten to grade two are eighteen to twenty-two students, and we fall right in the middle at twenty, for sure. Um, and grades four and five, twenty to twenty-four students. And I would say we fall right in the middle there right now. It varies by class, or varies by particular section, but that's generally where it is, and that's what those numbers are um are based on. Uh, the the Sunita Williams Project, Mr. Half, I'd have to defer to you on the reimbursement rate for uh that, which I think is our most recent example.
Yes, in in effect, it was about twenty-five percent. Um, while the number that um was given initially within the memorandum of of understanding, the agreement with them was in thirty-four percent plus, um by the time we worked through all the exclusions um and hit the various limits of of reimbursement, it effectively was twenty-five percent.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Levy?
So, uh, Mr. Rowley, you were talking about the the flow chart. I think that's also helpful. Um, the two options for Mitchell goes first are, it looks like the most expensive, and part of that cost is the temporary modulators, which would be thirty-six million dollars or so, which is a lot of money. I'm wondering if there's been thought about alternate ways to have temporary housing for the Mitchell population. So Dr. Kudikant, Kudikant's mentioned the Newman renovation, there was a temporary school on the parking lot of Newman, and that was, I think, between six and seven million dollars at the time. Could something like that be an option that might be less expensive? Or I know the superintendent, I have, I've talked about the possibility of using um Hillside as a temporary space. Have those been considered?
The uh, the idea of temporary space is to really essentially do what we did with Newman. The the difference, though, with Newman is that we took advantage of the cafeteria, gymnasium, and certain spaces um as they segregated the building for construction. So we did actually use some of the existing building, we wouldn't be able to do that with Mitchell, and obviously, we'd have to, we'd have a bit of a compromise. And obviously we'd have to, we'd have a bit of a compromised program. It's not going to be exactly what you would want if it's a temporary facilities. I do think that one of the things that needs to be explored. Is the, the status of Hillside and, and whether or not it's feasible. You're going to have to pour money into that building to make it usable for students. Because there will be required code upgrades and I'm not prepared, nor do I know enough about. What all of that needs to be, but I do think that's something that should be explored. As, as a, as a possibility. And perhaps maybe even bringing the existing modular classrooms at Mitchell. Over to that campus, which one could do in the, in the play area, parking area. And I won't get into any design because I can't do that either, but I, I think that is an area to explore. If that is the decision that, you know, the, the school committee and the direction the community wants to go in. And by the way, we're going to, we'll know more. As a result of the, the school administration operations project. And because we're exploring and going into detail with Hillside right now, we'll know a little bit more later in the spring about what some of the, you know, possibilities might be.
Just seems that maybe. Making those investments in Hillside could not only be less than having a temporary school, but in the end may leave us with a. An asset that we could use later on, I don't know.
And maybe far less than a, you know, forty million dollar temporary school or whatever that may be. I did want, Jason, Michelle Dunn, can we put up on the screen the, the four options with the bar and the dates, the one with the dates on it? I did want to point out something that you, Michelle, you pointed out, but it was really quick and I, I think it's important to point out to, to everyone and. Every time I look at this, I get, I get different. I, I get a different look at what this could be. In this. Yeah, in this one here, Michelle, maybe you could talk a little bit about the reality. That if a Pollard. Project went first, for example, in C or D. You talk about how we could move Mitchell students out of the existing. Facility, which is, needs a lot of attention and will need a lot of attention for the next several years. There's no question about that. As I pointed out earlier, but we could get Mitchell students into, for example, a High Rock. A, a much newer and, and essentially it's in move-in condition for Mitchell. Within seven years. And that's an important thing that, you know, for me, it's, I've been. Trying to think about these timelines. That's an important thing that that can happen sooner rather than later for that community. Can you comment on that, Michelle, a little bit more?
Actually, I'm gonna take that one. So if we look at the gray bar in options A and E compared to the end of the dark orange bar, particularly an option D. Right? And think about when Mitchell students would be out of their current environment. The difference between moving into the temporary facility, whether it's at Hillside or at Defazio. Versus moving into High Rock is only one year. Six years versus seven years. And so if that means that you may not have to expend. Financial resources on a temporary facility, is it worth that one year? Wait to get the Mitchell students out of the Mitchell building?
To compare, sorry, the end of the gray bars.
Sorry. So if you look. If you look at, at option A right here, this, the end of this gray bar is at six years. So that represents when students can move out of Mitchell and into the temporary facility as a way of getting them out of the Mitchell. The Mitchell building. And if you look down here at option D, the end of this orange bar is when students could move into High Rock. As a temporary facility and the distance between the end of that bar and the end of that bar is only one year.
So they would stay in Mitchell for an additional year. The trade-off is. They, we don't build a temporary facility. We take advantage of High Rock.
Correct.
But that means, and this is why it gets complicated, you tackle Pollard project first in, in that scenario.
Correct. In fact, I think there's an important. Sidebar observation about Mitchell going first. If Mitchell goes first. Then it becomes really unlikely that High Rock students would ever go over to Pollard. Because we don't have a, a function for the High Rock facility at that point. Right? Because we would have all the sixth graders over at the Pollard site. We would have all of the elementary school students in their current facilities and no students in High Rock at all. If, if, if that makes sense to folks.
I kind of, I kind of like that. And before you brought up your question, your, your topic, I was going to reference the fact that if. If the goal here is to put six, seventh and eighth together, we're making the most needy facility at the very end. But if we do what you just said, we kind of give it all three, right? We'd get a little lesser price. MSBA would help kick in. Kids at Mitchell would have that. Facility to be in a great little time and you get the sixth, seventh and eighth all together. So that'd be your, that'd be your, your C scenario, correct?
That would be, would be D.
Would be D. D.
D, okay.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the slide before, please? Thank you. Okay. Yep. That makes sense.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
Can I ask a question about, I have a few questions, but where the SOI processes is, are, is the SOI process being opened? What's the timeline on that?
It is open right now, closing in April shortly, within a month, I think, for this year.
Are we talking about putting in an SOI for this year just to get a process started?
No.
No, so we're going to miss this year?
Yes.
So that puts us out at least a year for starting a process with MSBA.
And these timelines on here would indicate next year as, as if you kicked off an SOI process next year.
Okay. I guess I'm, I'm gonna make two observations just to put them on the table. One is given the requirement from the state that all, that communities like Needham participate in this MSB MBTA. Communities Act with respect to housing. Right? That that will put us in a position where we are going to have to create zoning to support up to. I don't know, two thousand, twenty-two hundred units of potential additional housing in the town over time. That it strikes me that the option here, which are the bottom two options that create the most classroom space in town. Are therefore inherently. Beneficial to us. Then continuing a path like the one on the top that continues to be. Right-sized for the kind of school age population that we see ahead of us right now. So I just. I worry about what that means and, and worry about the flexibility that might be needed there. And then the last observation I'm going to make is I do sit here and I think, you know, as we hear about a twenty-five percent reimbursement rate. To the town of Needham and we all sit here and struggle as we're thinking about the cost of financing this. I hope that the state is thinking at some point about what that reimbursement looks like. It used to be more generous, but in fact, if need, communities like Needham are sitting here with the costs. In front of them saying, we're not clear how we can really afford this for our community. And what the implication is going to be for our community. That is getting more and more unaffordable for more and more people. I hope the state is thinking about that and hearing some of those messages because if we're in that boat, I cannot imagine. What the cost is in front of other communities that don't have the degree of resources that we have.
To that point, the. Hank, I think you know this, living in Concord, Concord went to the, approached the MSBA on three, three separate occasion, four. And was rejected four times because they'd already built a school in that community. So the MSBA has been very generous to Needham over time. So yes, we will go through the, the SOI process next year. But I, I don't. An educated guess is that we can't rely on that if we're going to move forward with any project necessarily. Marcus?
Two quick questions. Going back to the slide that had the High Rock as elementary school complete by twenty thirty, then the, the Mitchell three section. You briefly mentioned that there'd be possibly a dip. In enrollment for a short period of time after. I think Mitchell, the house was around the High Rock becoming an elementary school. And when you say that, does that mean, what does that mean for potential students and how do we plan for that if there's a dip in, in what does that mean exactly? Is that something that is just going to be kind of? Kind of thought out as, as we're allowing more kids into our school system? Or what does that mean exactly? I just want to understand that. And then the other question I had was about. Defazio and if that's a temporary swing space or building something there. With already a lack of green space in town, how would that affect what we're doing? Over on that land and, and activities and things that we offer for the community?
I'll be happy to answer the Defazio question if you can handle the enrollment question.
Maybe we can get that, that particular slide up there. Yeah. Down to twenty, I believe. Yeah. So I think you're asking about the bottom graphic, right? So we have been talking about all of Needham's elementary schools in numbers of sections per grade. And Dr. Good, you can't mention that it varies sort of year to year and school to school. So we think about Mitchell as a four-section school. We think about Elliott as a three-section school. So when we think about High Rock coming on as the fifth elementary school. While Mitchell is being worked on, that's what represents this dip. And the dip exists because Mitchell is currently a four-section school. Elliott could only function as a three-section school. And so it's, it's, I'm sorry, not Elliot, High Rock, thank you. High Rock, thank you. In total, what it means is the hundred and twenty classrooms that the district currently has at the elementary level would become a hundred and fourteen. Classrooms for those years between the two projects. And so graphically, what you're seeing there, the distance between the bottom black line. And the top black line represents four students per classroom across the district. So graphically, if you can think that's four students, when we see that purple line over the top by just a little bit. It translates into one extra student. Dr. Good, you can't mention that the guidelines are eighteen to twenty-two, it would be twenty-three students in some. K through two classrooms and twenty-five students in some four and five classrooms for that stretch of. Of time, if the enrollment forecast in fact comes to fruition. So that, that's sort of the scale that we're talking about. One student. Less than one student per classroom across the district in that, in that window.
And if it doesn't come to fruition, then what would be the backup or what do we do from there if that doesn't, you know, happen? What is the alternative to that?
You mean if, if the enrollment is higher or lower?
Yes, yeah.
I don't know that we have, we have a current plan for, for that. We've, we've only planned for what we know sort of in, in front of us with the data that we have.
In regards to Defazio, I'll, I'll step back for a moment and several years ago, with an agreement among the boards. The school committee agreed that once the Hillside site in its entirety no longer serves an educational purpose. It will go under the jurisdiction of the select board. That same, at that same time, there was an agreement that a portion of Defazio, and I guess the best way to describe it as I understand it. And Hank, correct me if I'm wrong, the parking lot area, I think that's just the best way to describe it, the top lot area. Would become a parcel available for, for educational purposes. In particular, the conversation was around temporary school, but it could also. Be considered for a permanent school, although there are complicating factors with. The, the public facility, with public facilities on the same campus and as you point out, Marcus, the encroaching on the, the fields. But temporarily, the big idea was to put a temporary modulators. Generally in the parking lot area, not to affect the fields, although there certainly would be an impact on programming in that area.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a tremendous amount of work, tremendous amount of data and a lot of different permutations and, and options that are to weigh out. So I'll try not to. Go too far off in, into the weeds, but get some thoughts out that may contribute. One, I, I had one thing that is a kind of a combination. Of a question that comes with the comment, which is. If the Hillside School were to be fully brought up to code to be usable as educational space. Would that meet all of the, the needs for temporary space in these various scenarios? And one of the reasons for my asking that question is. I think when we think of building on the top lot at Defazio or something, that's, that's, that's a short-term use whereas. At least from where I'm sitting, the Hillside facility is something that is going to be swing space for capital projects or other needs indefinitely. So the money that was invested in bringing that up to full code would be money that would have long-term value. For the town, but that might quite, my question is, is that enough swing space for the schools?
It, it's, it's enough swing space for Mitchell and the population at Mitchell. I think in particular, you have to, Hank, you can provide some more detail. You have to make sure. And, and by the way, when we say bring up to code, we're not talking about recreating what we've done at High Rock, for example.
No, I mean, so that you be.
You have a safe, warm facility. That is up to code and, and has all the safety features necessary, but it is not going to have all the bells and whistles.
No, it's, I, I get it. Temporary space, but I think you've answered my question. I don't need Hank. I can't see him from where I'm sitting anyway. So my other comments are, cost is, is huge. We're only going to get some MSBA and not, maybe not as much as we want because of all the other demands in the system. This is a town with, we're fortunate to have very great. Material resources, but they're not unlimited and there's limited to what people are willing to, to pay or contribute or perceive that they can. So we need to manage that all the way through. The timeline of all of this is very important to me. Capital needs, they constantly accumulate every year. And by stretching them out, that's doesn't really solve our problem. We've got to keep moving in a way that manages everything. When I look at the needs at the Mitchell, I'm going like, if we're going to make that our second project, then we've got to keep this on as timely a path as we can. There is another question that I'd ask to ask to comment on if we're, if Mitchell is going to be the second. Project, I'd like to know a little bit more about how we make sure that that's going to be. Are we confident that not respecting all those red dots, that it's a good, safe, appropriate educational space for the. For whatever period of time we need. The sixth grade reconfiguration, because I had to say, I sat here through decades of those discussions too. It's unconvincing to me pedagogically. But that's a school department consideration and if you're saying, and I, some of these things seem to say. That combining the campuses may be a net. Economic benefit and capital planning benefit in the long run. So that's probably something to talk about. I know that you'll make it work whether there's two schools or one. And then the issue of capacity is something that has to be considered going forward. The, I think that your McKibben studies have been great in terms of doing the, you really brought the methodology in and advanced it in a way that's been very helpful to the town. But everything is based on assumptions and one of their assumptions is it does not include some of what Mary Ann is talking about, which is that there are a lot of. Public policy things going on now at the state level and considerations in town. I don't think two thousand units. But five hundred units of additional units of family housing in the foreseeable future. I think that's real and I, at least likely enough that I would want to have that planned for in our school capacities. And so you have five, if five sections fits at Mitchell. Then five sections it should be because you may still need another section over at Elliott later on. Have what you need to begin with. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Matthews. Just real quickly on, on Mitchell and then your last comment, and then we'll try to see if there are any final ones so we can wrap up and stick to some kind of a reasonable timeline here. Mitchell's going to need attention. Mitchell needs attention today. There are two classrooms that are not in use today because the. Heating system. And rooms have individual heating systems. They're not like the town hall or the Sanita Williams, other schools that have rooftop systems. Have, have essentially failed and we're, we're waiting parts. That, that happened at Pollard earlier. We had to close Pollard for a day. The students have to come back after everyone has left. For another day of learning in, on June twenty-third because we had to shut the building down because we had broken. And therefore flooding because of the heating units. Those schools need attention. Mitchell will need ongoing attention. The good thing is, if I can say this. The staff, the program there is excellent and that will continue to be the case. The town has also been incredibly attentive. Kate Fitzpatrick has prioritized what we need to do at Mitchell and Pollard. The town has been therefore responsive when something breaks. And because those systems, this is, I guess, you know, silver lining, they are not as sophisticated as Sanita Williams. Which is quite complex and requires a lot of bandwidth and energy and, and funding. Mitchell, when it breaks. Mitchell, when it breaks, there's a way to fix what's broken and keep it together for a little while. That's what will have to happen for the foreseeable future for that school. Lastly, I know I've said to the school committee, I'll say it again to them this evening, that a five-section school at, at Mitchell, on the Mitchell campus, I think is untenable for the community. Just by comparison, Sunita Williams is a, is a 90,000 square foot school. And just picture that in your head and place that 90,000 square foot building on the Mitchell property, which remember is surrounded by a slope on one side and the, and the forest on the other side. So there's limited space and there are hardly any ball fields there. So imagine Sunita Williams plunked down there. But a five-section school is 120,000 square feet, and Sunita Williams is only 90,000 square feet. So imagine trying to build that kind of a building on that parcel. I don't think it's realistic. I think you'll have a few phone calls from some neighbors. So I think we have to keep studying what will make the most sense. And of course, if we have High Rock available as an elementary school, that will solve the, the need for classroom space. Mr. Borelli, I wanted to, and then Josh and Kevin, I think, have questions, and we'll try to wrap up. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Barr, and, and Mr. Kent.
Okay, I will be quick, I will be quick. I see the hour, you know, option C, I think, makes the most sense. The MSBA issue, that's going to be decision point. If we apply and then we get rejected, whether to apply again. So what I would like to see is if we can break out the cost of Pollard, and I know we have a total here, just so we can do the 25% or whatever that number is, to see what we would be, the downside risk would be if we don't proceed with the MSBA. I think that's very important to do. I'd also like to see us get the projected zoning to McKibben for further study as part of the future school needs. I think that would be important to do and as we move forward. But I think option C to me, and, and the way you're planning it with a three-section school and the timing makes the most sense. And of course, it is all about the goals at the end of the day, and that is the least expensive option. So thank you for all your work on this.
We'll certainly make sure that we get, continue to get updated enrollment. Mr. Levy, and then Mr. King, and then Mr. Kent.
So I just want to point out some of the considerations of option C and D. I think they're the most, the least amount of dollars, but they're also concentrated. So the amount of debt burden within a certain amount of time may be actually higher than the other options. And that was a big concern earlier on. We're trying to make sure that the debt burden on taxpayers, what the tax burden is not extraordinarily high in any given year. So that's a concern. Another question concern about C and D is that they assume six elementary schools. And so understanding the operational costs for six elementary schools compared to five is also a big component. And then, well, I'm going out of order a bit. When we talk about the, the debt burden, I think our Director of Finance is, is going to be doing some facility financing planning. I think it would be really helpful to have those, unless there's going to be a submission to the MSBA imminently, I think it would be helpful to have those in hand before there's any options that are taken off the table so that we understand what we're looking at. Well, I guess, what, what is the purpose of taking the options off the table now if, if we're not going to be submitting in April?
Well, there are a couple of things. One, first of all, it's just the, to get answers in reasonable timeframe with the capacity of the Town Manager's Office and the Assistant Town Manager, I think it's, it is reasonable to limit the options, particularly if, this is part of the fact-finding, I think, for the school committee. What, what are people thinking about what makes sense for the community? You know, if all the options make sense, well then, then maybe we have to do that. But I think it's going to take a long time to get responses to that. The, the big idea is to limit the options so that it can be a reasonable workload for the town. Also, just as a reminder, once we step into the MSBA process and we're selected, they're going to have us do this all over again. They're going to have us investigate everything all over again. So it's not done until it really is done. But I think this can, limiting, narrowing options, I think, based on all these conversations, provides, I think, more direction for the town to allow conversations and, and planning to, to take place. Mr. King, and then Mr. Kent.
Yeah, hey, thanks very much. Quick question about the which comes first debate. Should Mitchell go first? And then you build Pollard afterwards. Aren't we teeing up Mitchell students and Mitchell families to suffer through two construction projects, one after the other?
Can, Jason, Michelle, can I have you tackle that?
So according to our, I'm sorry, according to our timelines, you would, if you were a Mitchell student at the time when construction started, you might spend two of your years in the modulars or three of your years in the modulars. But by the time you got to the Pollard School, because you'd have to go through grade six over at High Rock, they would just be completing their project.
Who would be completing?
The Pollard School, or you'd be, so I, I think the way we looked at it is, the most a student might move is three times within that period. If you were in kindergarten, then you moved out, and then you moved back in. But you wouldn't have to go through construction again. You would just miss it. But your sibling might, so.
Thanks. All right, we're going to try to do one more question. Mr. Kent?
That Hank clarifies the use of Hillside School as swing space. It's not as simple as you might think. So like Hank, to mention a few things.
Yes, and we're, we're fortunate that Doran Whittier went through this with the MSBA back when we were looking first, going through the feasibility stage before the Sunita Williams School was constructed. They require you to go through an assessment of the existing conditions of the school and the capability of renovating that school. Going through that process, what they concluded was that, one, the site was too small to fit the new school, that the building had significant problems, not the least of which is the contamination of the site, which continues to be well-managed, but it is a, a long-term issue. And it would have to be fully upgraded with all ADA as well as energy structural, I mean, everything across the board, MEP, so on and so forth. The constraints of the structure of the building are of a particular concern because you have a very limited floor to ceiling height. So getting contemporary air conditioning, for instance, into that space along with the fire sprinklers that are needed. For instance, in Sunita Williams, we have a 14-foot floor-to-floor. The floor-to-floor in Hillside today is less than 12, is 11 and a half feet, I think. So just the temporary use by school admin, putting the sprinklers into that space, which we will have to do, those will be fully exposed within the spaces. They will be obstructing lights. They, it's, it's a building of the 60s. And when they looked at that option now, close to a decade ago, they were in the $14 million range just to do that basic upgrade. And it did not address the parking problem. They only have 50 parking spaces on that site and the need for 100. So there were so many deficiencies of the site that it would be, and you can't address just one, you have to address all of them if you're going to reoccupy it. I, I appreciate that clarification, Hank. And, and I think with even, with even all of that, it is still, if we get to that point, worthwhile to explore what it would take, what it would cost, because there are trade-offs in modulars or, or Hillside. But I appreciate the, the clarification there. Well, that.
The comparison is, I guess, to that temporary school, which is also not going to be like Sunita Williams, you know, with, with very high ceilings, that's my understanding as well. So it, it's still temporary. It's not, it's not being considered as anything other than that.
In, in a way.
That was our analysis of. Site and civil issues, it has envelope issues, it has extreme handicap issues. It has, it's a three-level school with an intermediate level for the library. And just getting students up and down, you, you would have to have an elevator put into the building. The fire protection is certainly a concern. So I'm not sure where the dollars would fall right now in today's dollars, but it is a considerable investment as well.
I think it's, it's important that we do a study at some point in time and see what the real costs are. We've been going through this with the police and fire in, in that area. We also are preparing for the school administration to move over there. It's clearly been identified to us that, that because these are temporary, the building inspector is allowing us to, to do certain things that if this is ever used for schools, it'll never happen. I'll, I'll guarantee you that. We're going to have to really do a, a big job at Hillside to use that for school space. So it's worth the study, I think, to open everyone's eyes that this is not an easy task to use that for swing space, well, schools.
And if this, if this were, if this were easy, we wouldn't be having this giant meeting trying to sort through all these complex issues. And I can't stand looking at that thing anymore because it makes me dizzy. So with, with all of those comments and that feedback and, and questions, I would like to thank everyone. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Barr to conclude and kind of gavel out this meeting. She'll certainly share what next steps will be for the school committee in the community.
Um, reminds me a little bit of listening to the questions when this was presented to the Mitchell School community. Very good questions, very spot-on. And, and I'd like to thank Don and Michelle and Jason for their multiple presentations, for the ability to present this complicated scenarios in a way that we can understand enough to ask questions about and where we can look back at the graphics to understand what's going on. So thank you once again to Don, Michelle, and Jason. I would also like to thank our principals, who live with the programs and facilities in these three schools that we're talking about all the time and the hard work they put in. Probably holding buckets for Greg and, and holding hands for teachers and students for Tamatha and Jessica. But their work is superb and our students really do well in all of these schools. It was really important for us to hear all of your thoughts and opinions as we move forward as a school committee. We have already, and Dan alluded to some of this, thought about next steps. We need to work through all of the if, then, then whats over time in spite of, and in spite of our concerns about the timelines and cost. So our thoughts for the immediate future are to meet again, our regular, next regular meeting is March 15th, to ask additional questions, clarify the options, and discuss the merits of the options and the ideas. We then will plan to vote at our force, April 7th meeting. At the, at the moment, we think it is important to cut down on the number of options in order to get the best information possible about a financial timeline. Expecting the town and Dave Davison to produce the information on four different options seems like quite a lift. So we're, we know how enormously busy the town is, the Town Manager, Dave Davison, especially until after town meeting. So we'd like to hand off two, maybe three, rather than four options if possible. And then hopefully a financing, a financing plan can be available, maybe in the summer, maybe July 4th-ish. We might as well have goals on times so we can keep this moving. This is so complex and seems fraught, given the financial lift and the timeline lift. But the school committee is committed to moving forward without delay. That's why we're here to keep moving forward with a master plan for the benefit of our students and for our town. So we look forward to continuing to work with all of you, with the Town Manager, with the residents of the town, and to move forward on these important and necessary school projects. So we, I can't tell you how helpful this group meeting was. We don't plan to make you, or ask you to do this again very often, but it was very helpful to be in the same room with all of you. We hope you will share with your boards and committees, the entire select board is here, but with your boards and committees, anything that you need to. So thank you for being here. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. Keep the thoughts and questions coming. We can take them right along. And at this point, I would entertain the motion to adjourn this meeting. Is that okay if I do that, Mr. Borelli?
Absolutely, it's your meeting.
Okay, just making sure.
I appreciate that.
The big boss up there. Moved by Michael. Seconded by Andrea. Any discussion? Hearing none, we come into the vote. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, 5-0-0. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.